Hey, Madison, are we all set? Okay. Tradition, y'all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Another beautiful day in paradise. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I want to just switch. We have on 1D a discussion for road millage and 1E a resolution for, or I'm sorry, 1C, the resolution for local road funding. I'd like it to be, road millage to be 1C. And the local road funding for Fruit Road would be 1D because how we, what we come up with out of the road millage will depend how, at least I will vote on Fruit Road. Support. Okay, we have motion to support us flip-flopping the 1C and 1D. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing. We can probably do this all in one. I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing for police, fire, mills, garbage, and garbage refuge fees.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:02 PM for the police, fire, and garbage and refuge fees.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. I'll open up public hearing for police and fire millage and garbage rates. Anybody can get up and talk about them. I'll let you know, we are proposing no change in police and no change in our fire mills. And our garbage rates are gonna stay the same. We actually found garbage, was it what, a year ago? Two years ago? We negotiated, actually, everybody was going up, but we negotiated a contract that was 10% lower. And we got frozen for, going forward, for three years. So...
That was two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago. So we got another year. And then the renewal, too, is quite reasonable. So we haven't had to adjust any of the garbage rates at all. So... Do we have any takers on, anybody wanna make a public comment on our millage rates?
Whitey Simon, 4722 Green Drive, Harson's Island. I was looking at the resolution number 2022-19. I have a question on the first whereas, and that is, the date in 2009 when the Special Assessment District for Fire Protection was formed. Is that when the township took over Harson's Island?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, as I go down, there's no real discussion about the costs. I would like to see a, an outline of how you arrive at these costs, but that's probably too much to ask for. But finally, I wanna know why the Clay Township Supervisor will spread such special assessment levy? Shouldn't that be spread by the needs of the operation of the fire department rather than by the supervisor?
I'm sorry, the question was, the last statement in the resolution, I believe that's what he's referring to. It says now thereof be it resolved, and then the last statement after the 1.1 mill.
That's part of your statutory duties, Artie.
What I'm questioning is that the Board of Trustees hereby directs the Clay Township Supervisor to spread such special assessment. Shouldn't that be spread by the news, the needs of the operation of these fire departments, of the two fire houses? Because I remember when shortly after 2009, Clay Township took over Harson's Island, we were told by the supervisor at that time that in order to get appropriate coverage that the residents wanted, it would cost us $450,000. I don't see how a subdivision, even though it's gated, can be forced to pay additional fire protection when we are one fire department. And so my question would be, if the supervisor's gonna spread these special assessments the way the prior ones have been, are we going to be required to spend $500,000 or $560 by now to get the coverage that was requested?
The reason why the supervisor does it, it's the statutory duty of the supervisor.
Oh, I didn't see that under the statutory duties, but that's okay.
Well, it is. And all the other special assessments, that statement is in there. And to answer your question, if you shoot me an email, I'm not sure if I have your email, I'll shoot you the budget for the fire department.
No, I've seen them. I've looked at the budgets. I've seen your pay, your budget, everyone's. I know what you're spending. It is just that I still ask whether Harson's Island coverage will be less than the rest of the district, which we did have when you told us we required to pay $465,000 a few years back to get the coverage in an open meeting, if you remember.
I think what we were talking about ALS and EMS coverage?
Yeah, we are.
No, we, back then.
Mm-hmm.
And the costs have changed significantly from today, from what, three, four years ago when I made that statement.
Well, that's what I indicated. It would probably be $550,000 or more thousand dollars now.
Or more, so...
Or more. Shouldn't we be covered? Both of us? And shouldn't you have an assessment that covers both? The mainland and the...
It does. It's the one assessment covers both, Whitey.
Then why don't we get that special coverage that you told us we can't have?
Well, I didn't tell you you can't have. Thank you for your comments. I never told you you can't, we don't, you're not gonna get the coverage, Whitey.
Why don't you get the millage, the assessment, in line so that you can provide the coverage?
I believe what Whitey is referring to is when we gave them an amount for restoring the paramedics on the island only.
Right.
That would be an additional cost to the island if the island only wanted.
It was for EMS. We got a quote to put EMS, EMS trailer or vehicle supplied by Tri-Hospital, we got a quote, on the island.
Yes.
It was for $450,000.
Yes.
That's what you were talking about.
Yes.
And it was, we did a poll, did a big study. It was turned down. The islanders did not wanna pay that extra, for that extra service.
Well, if you can assess, why can't you assess that payment for the extra service, both here and on the island?
Because the islanders didn't want it.
Excuse me. Because my son had a heart attack recently.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. When he got the first responders, they were able to take his blood pressure and told him they can't do anything until the ambulance arrives. I fortunately did not have a heart attack about a week ago, and I, too, had to wait again for the ambulance to arrive to get the service and the protection that we probably should have in a fire department as large, as small. It is nothing against the fire department. They show up, they come and do it. But they can't do a thing. So what do we call that protection? Would you define that protection for me?
So is this an ALS versus BLS question?
Yes.
It's all...
Is that what you're referring to?
I am asking...
The level of care?
The level of care, yes, sir. I would like somebody to be able to put an IV into my arm.
Okay.
And they can't do it.
Okay.
Because you don't cover them in your assessment. And you continue to do that, both on the mainland and on the island. Because my son lives on the mainland. They had to wait before they could. Luckily, they got him to the hospital, he got two stents installed, and further damage was prevented.
Well, we asked the islanders if they'd be willing to pay extra $450,000 to have an ambulance stationed on the island.
Why should anyone, mainland or Harson's Island, pay extra for that level of service? Is my question.
Because it costs extra.
It costs more.
It costs more.
Well, then, right here, you can go up to 10 mills, you told me in this document.
So is that what you're getting? You, is your request that the township trustees vote to increase the level of taxation or mills to include now a BLS coverage instead of an ALS coverage?
It's the other way around.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to see more coverage.
I'm just trying to clarify. I'm not being critical or judging. I just wanna know what your, what your point is.
I want somebody that comes to my house to give me an IV when I need one. Unfortunately, the young man in the ambulance tried four times to get an IV, and I was a pincushion, and he didn't succeed.
Okay.
So I understand that. But we do not have the timely response of appropriate coverage to prevent. And when we're talking about that, we have no coverage for the people who only come five, 10 times in the summer? We now have a large number...
Did you say no coverage?
Pardon?
Can you repeat your last statement?
I said that we have a lot of visitors coming.
Agreed.
Both to the township and to the island.
Yep.
We have lots of short-term rentals.
Agreed.
How do we protect them?
Can I ask you, Whitey, how long did they take to get to your house, and how long did they take to get to your son's house? Because...
Longer than about 18, 20 minutes to both places. And by the time the ambulance showed up at his house, it was about another five, 10 minutes. And they immediately recognized that he had a heart attack, and they drove him to McLaren where they installed two stents.
If you give us the day and time, we can check the stats to verify. But we get stats from Tri-Hospital who's...
Well, you get them.
Who provides us our service.
Sure.
And they're within the state's guidelines.
Well, all I can tell you, if nobody can do anything that responds to me, not even put me a pincushion in there, you're not providing sufficient coverage to all of us, the whole township. Proporitatively, you all live in the township. Maybe I'm a little older than you are, and so I have a little more care. But the coverage is not there that I have experienced now twice.
Okay, thank you.
In the month.
Maybe make a suggestion that we take it under review one more time at some point in time, a special meeting or whatever, and discuss this. Yeah, we can. This is a public hearing right now, though. Yeah, right. Is there any other public comments? On garbage, fire, police? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearings.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for police, fire, and garbage and refuge fees at 6:13.
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearings at 6:13. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have bills payable.
Ford, I'd like to make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $237,704.
Support.
Okay, a motion in support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next is a supervisor's report. See, dealing with a lot of billion blight issues as usual. They, I'm working actually on a national business that wants to relocate or build something in Clay or possible locations. And actually, we got a, had some discussion with a lot of people on Russell Island. In the past, Russell Island, we never really went over there and did blight inspections. They have a pretty strong homeowners association, and they kinda like self-policed it. I think they have 144 residents over there. And there was a few, the residents would like us to get involved. I talked to their association. He's gonna send out a stern letter to all the members, and hopefully that will keep everybody happy and get everyone back online. The teardown on the garage on Esther Queen was scheduled the week of the 8th, and truthfully, I didn't drive by to see if it happened or not. I was gonna do that today. But other than that, it's been pretty busy. Had a lot of people in the township complain about Eagle permits and the perception of what's going on with Eagle as being an overreach on their part. I've talked to a lot of state reps and federal reps of ours on this. I gave them some examples that we've seen. And I haven't gotten any feedback yet, but I know our Congresswoman Lisa McLean was gonna meet with the governor and discuss, and one of the topics to be discussed was Eagle and what's going on with them. And let's see, still been doing a lot of work on everything to get our $1 million grant for our sewer interceptor, and my goal is to get that secured and out to bid this winter. So we got a lot of work to do between now and then to make that happen. And working on broadband expansion still on the clay backroads. There was a company running fiber optics there, and everyone got all excited.
Yeah.
And it's not for broadband and for internet access for the people on this road. They're actually connecting cell towers together, and it's something to do with the schools also. So, yeah, a lot of people were pretty excited about that. Still working with Eagle to get our permit for our Harson's Island Nature Park. And we're hoping that comes along here pretty quick. We did start our audit process. We're collecting a lot of information on our audit, and probably next week I'll have a letter to prove the scope of the audit and the cost and everything. We do that every year. But that's been taking up quite a bit of time for Kristy and Cindy and myself. We scheduled the fall cleanup townshipwide on October 8th. On the mainland, it's gonna be 8 to 4 behind the water department as usual. And on the island, it's gonna be Saturday only, 8 to 4. We could not get Sunday because the landfills closed, and we're using a private company, not Mterra, this year, and so we wouldn't be able to get dumpsters for this Sunday. So I thought, one day's better than none. And in conjunction with that, we're planning Oktoberfest block party in downtown San Souci. Kinda wanna celebrate doing the cleanup and, is to give the businesses in San Souci a little shot in the arm. There's been a real hole, I guess you would say, there that since the San Souci bar's been closed. And just trying to help them out a little bit. We're gonna bring the county stage in, close the actual road right in downtown San Souci down. And we got two bands coming, we'll bring in some Porter Johns and stuff. I talked to all the businesses there, they're all totally stoked for it. They're excited about it. And so I got two sponsors looking for one more. It'll be totally self-funded event, so...
What date is that?
October 8th. And I also invited all the nonprofits to, if they wanna set up and do non, you know, sell tickets or do anything to raise money for their nonprofits, they are more than welcome. Still working on getting quotes for outside exercise equipment along our park next door, our walking path. I mentioned it before, there's a grant that just opened up through the DNR, and the goals of this grant and the goal, and this project, they align like perfectly. So I'm confident we'll score high on it. I'm waiting to see if other communities in the county would also like to partner up and co-write it for, if they wanna get some equipment for their parks. It's gonna be, it's gonna come out in sometime October, but I wanna be, have all our ducks in a row and be ready when that, when that comes out. It's called the DNR Spark Grant. Music in the Park finished up this past week, and I think, I'll tell you what, we had a great concert series. Lot of fun, very well attended. I think our Thursday night here, we had about 350 people. And I put it out to do a food drive to collect food for our blessing boxes in our community. We got a ton of food. It was great. And I mentioned how we wanna do a blessing box for pets. We actually have a bunch of dog food and cat foods in our office. I got, I'm getting a quote to have one of these built for us. And it was amazing how our community came out, and they do every time. But, yeah, it was, it was a lot of food that we collected. It was a great, great thing. We kinda came up with that idea at the end of our last meeting, didn't we? And it worked out well. I think we should make that a part of our, all of our Music in the Parks going forward. And we do have one more on the island, September 17th, at Brownsfield. We have Dude and the Biders playing, and they kinda piggyback and do, they do a pig roast at the same time for a fundraiser. And we do have the Scarecrow Fest coming up, September 24th. I got an organizational meeting on that tomorrow night. And what we did, we combined the Sturgeon Festival and the Scarecrow Festival into one. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be great. I think we have, for the Sturgeon Festival, we have 30 boats registered, or for that, they're pretty close, too. And, you know, we are the Sturgeon angling fish, or fishing angling, angling capital. And like last year, you know, 30 boats go out, and one night, they go on Saturday night, and it's done by Sunday morning at 8:00. They usually, between 30 boats, they usually boat around 90 sturgeon. It's all catch and release. But we catch a lot of sturgeon out here. That's why we're the capital. And it should be celebrated like we do. I know we're gonna have two sturgeon tanks under the pavilions. One will be an actual touch where the wildlife, fisheries and wildlife will come and let you pet them and touch them and tell them about them. And another tank will be a viewing tank with sturgeon. And we got all kinds of festivities planned that Saturday for the kids. The Sturgeon Fest, they're gonna do a beer tent Friday night, that Friday night and Saturday night. I might have a flip-flop. Friday night, I think they have the Melgin Brothers playing, and Saturday, the Gobies. Might be flip-flops, so. Got some good bands there. See what else to go with. This coming Wednesday, I'm going, the Algonac Lions is doing a pig roast. Yep. At the North Channel Yacht Club. And there's free transportation from Deckers Landing over to the... Yeah, they got the Little Finn boat that will run you back and forth. You don't need your own boat to the tent. Or you can bring your own boat. I'll be bringing my pontoon boat. I thought you were gonna bring your 42-footer. Yeah, no. So, other than that, that's all we got right now. It's been busy, a lot of positive stuff going on in our community. So... Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments on anything? Any public comments? State your name and address.
You don't want my address. Lance Serdy, Clay Township Water and Sewer Department. I just wanna make a statement that our Governor Whitmer...
Yes.
Has declared a state of emergency for Lapeer, Macomb, Oakland, and St. Clair Counties, but it does not include us. It is north and west of us. We get our water from Algonac, so it does not include us.
I'm glad you... I was gonna mention, I forgot. She declared a water emergency for St. Clair County, boil water alert. St. Clair County affects Birchville, and there's a few other communities up north. That's all...
Birchville, Clyde, and I think there's one other one.
Yeah, there's one other. Birchville and Clyde, and that's it.
It's nothing south of that.
It's for the people that are connected to the Great Lakes Water Authority.
Yes.
And that ain't us.
Was that due to a spill?
No.
No, it was due to a big main break.
All the water main break, okay.
The intake that comes from Lake Huron is what broke.
Yeah. And I just heard that driving in, and I put it out on social media.
Oh, we've been swamped with calls.
That does not include us. We're good.
And then everybody says, are you sure you're telling, what you're saying is right? Because the governor declared it.
Yeah.
It's like, no, 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 it's got nothing to do with us.
Yeah, no.
So...
Yeah, I wish she didn't do all St. Clair County.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Glad you brought it up. Thank you, Lance.
Thanks, Lance.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. Moving right along to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with check reports. The board approved it in between meetings, and the St. Clair County Road Commission road watch for the week of August 15th.
Support. Okay, we have motion to support. Any discussion?
The August 1st minutes, I assume you were still doing election?
Correct. Yep, I didn't have them done when I put the board packet together. I had to watch the video.
Website eventually, or?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Will be approved in our next meeting, I assume, right?
Yep. Yep, I apologize, but I didn't have time to watch the video. I wasn't here.
What's the road watch all about?
We get that every meeting, that's what they say, what's gonna close down.
She did. I do have some.
For the county.
Yeah, I do have one. There's still some things you wanna review.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have chief's report. Chief Rose, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Chief's report for July 2022. During the month of July, I attended three meetings, and one was with the St. Clair Flats Association, St. Clair County Chiefs Association, and also with the U.S. Coast Guard. We've been planning our next event, which is the Raft Off, and it was held on August 13th. The fire department will be getting permission, or we did get permission from some of the property owners for our medical staging, our command post, and then I asked permission from Bobby Bryson to use his barge for that day. We were very light on injuries that day, so we had about six calls, mostly intoxicated subjects, so it was pretty, pretty mild. And I think there was a third less of the boats this year than what there was in last year's event. The fire department also took the fireboat to the North Channel Yacht Club last month. We did a pass-by by discharging water for the yacht club. They had a child's, a child day event. We also moored the vessel and then let the kids come aboard and look at it, and if they had any questions about it, we answered their questions. I wanted to thank the Clay Township Police Department again for responding to a call that we had on Anchor Bay Drive. It was CPR run, and their help was dearly needed. We had a subject that was in the water. He's pretty large, and they assisted us in removing him from the water, so we did, we do appreciate their assistance. I also want to inform the board that we've lost three of our firefighters, our part-time firefighters, and some of the scheduling's gonna be a little light. If we need to, I'll, planning on putting one person on the island for 12-hour shift to cover at least a day half, and he can run with Brian. I do have some applications. I did receive one last week, and I got a couple today, so I'll, we'll be putting them through the process of, the background on them through the police department. So hopefully, we get our staffing back up. Plus, I'm gonna work with Cindy as far as posting help wanted for the department.
Did you squirt some kids on the island, too?
The Brownsfield?
Yes.
I thought you did that, yeah. What is the normal, if you don't mind me asking, Chief? How many, how often the island is manned, like before and then after, when we lost these three?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What's the schedule on the island? You said 12 hours? That's every day of the month, or what's normal?
No, that would be 12, 12 hours a day.
12 hours a day.
Right. There's some, sometimes we'll have a 24-hour shift, we'll have two men over there. It depends on the availability, because we are self-scheduling. there. It depends on the availability, because we are self-scheduling, and it's done by their availability. There's some days, and especially in the summertime, people are going on vacation. We're a little bit light. If I can't man the island, I man the mainland with three people. And what I want to do is I want to at least put somebody over there during the day for a 12-hour shift. We have a firefighter over there, Mr. Sears, or Brian Sears. He also can respond with us and, and help us out.
I mean, our goal is to staff it all the time.
Right.
But it's, it's difficult. It's hard.
Generally, you're there 12 hours every day of the month, or just on the weekends, or?
No, we're gonna try and do that every day.
Okay.
12 hours.
Right. I think back in February and March, we were running about.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, pretty much all the time. But, you know, it, it's harder in the summer. There's more demands, and, and, you know, because we are part-time, we do have a little bit of a turnover. And quite honestly, we don't want to just hire a warm body to be a fireman. They gotta be, they, well, they have to be trained and, and everything, number one. But, you know, we're letting these people come into everybody's home. We, we do take our extra steps. We do the background checks and this and that, and, you know, make sure that we're not putting anybody in jeopardy in any how, any form of way.
Just seemed like last summer, we were manned almost 24 hours all the time, weren't we?
Right.
Last summer we were, but this summer's just not.
The whole market changed.
Right.
Okay.
There's a lot of.
Just trying to recall.
Restaurants that aren't open and, and everything else, so.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, chief. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, unfinished business. I wanted to revisit our ARPA funding for police command, dispatch, and fire department. Our orders, yeah, they said to better housekeeping, we needed to be more specific as, you know, when, of the timeframe. So we're proposing that we pay out all command and dispatch employees $3,000, provided that they're a township employee as of today, August 15th, and has worked in the past 30 days. And we're also proposing that we pay out the fire department employees on the, the schedule that we agreed to our last meeting, from $3,000 down to $250, depending on how many hours they work, provided that they are Clay Township employees as of August 15th today, and has worked in the past 30 days.
I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA funding for police command, dispatch, and fire department.
Support.
And I apologize, I wasn't here, so I wasn't able to catch that. There wasn't like a hard stop date on there. So I kind of pushed Artie to bring it back here, so that we didn't have any issues down the road.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? I think we can do this, and we don't need a roll call for this, do we? I don't think so.
No, we can do one.
Yeah, let's do a roll call, just in case, because the total is up. It's over $10,000.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we, as the board knows, we were going to get a, a new server for our police department. And we had a quote for $28,000 that when we went to pull the string and say, hey, let's do this, the, um, the price went up to somewheres around $36,000. And I said, well, we just, we have to bring him back to the board if that's what we want to do. Mike was exposed, chief coach, I should say, was exposed to COVID, so he took today off. And I talked to him on the phone. He's okay if we postpone this until the next meeting, when he can be here. It's something that doesn't have to happen tonight.
I'll make a motion to postpone the police department server.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support to postpone. Any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of postponing item 1A to the next meeting? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have a full-time dispatch hire. Austin.
P. Shot.
P. Shot? All right. And Bev's here.
This is the letter that you've received from Chief Couch. I'm requesting approval from the township board to hire Austin P. Shot as a full-time dispatcher. Austin is currently employed as a police cadet for Marysville Police Department. Background investigation has revealed Austin to be highly respected among his peers and supervisors. As always, if you have any questions, contact me. I also did a little bit of my own background, and Austin was part, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the parakeets, or?
Yeah.
And he donated whatever he had left over for kids in his fund. So he's a Jimmy Buffett fan, so I like him.
Oh, he should have had his parrot hat on.
Yes. So he's very giving. I did speak to some people that he worked with in Marysville. He started off as a explorer and then went into the cadets. So I, I think law enforcement is in his blood. And they had nothing but good things, and they were a little upset that I was gonna steal him. But I would highly recommend him.
Great. So Austin.
Yes, sir.
You want to come work for Clay Township?
Yes, sir.
That's great. Why did you pick us?
It's been recommended to me by some of my close friends and family, and it's just everything I've heard about it is great. And when I come here, everyone is super nice. I haven't met a rude person yet, and that's, I love that. So I like the area a lot.
You know how to swim?
Yes.
Good. I thought you'd have to swim in the dispatch. You never know.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
I tell you, I mentioned it before the meeting, I got a call from the supervisor up at Port Huron Township, Bob Lewandowski. Him and I, we, we were close, we talk a lot together. And he goes, hey, I gotta recommend this Austin kid for your police. Have you gotten an application from him yet? I'm not sure. He goes, well, you, you need to hire him if, if you do. And I talked to Chief Coach about it and everything, and the very next day, you came in.
Yeah.
From when Mr. Lewandowski called me and, and everything. So, yes, I, awesome.
Perfect.
Anybody have any questions for him?
So you're familiar with the area and its unique entities that we have?
Will be.
Yes, sir.
Waterways and the, some of the building, the structures that we have are also unique. So I'm sure you'll learn all of that.
Yeah, I'm excited to learn it.
Well, I can make a motion to approve Austin P. Shot as a full-time dispatcher for the Clay Township Police Department.
Support.
When's this day to hire? Is it on here? When, when, when are we gonna start him? Today?
We can start him today.
As of?
As of today, once he's approved.
Effective, I'm ending the motion, effective date, August 15th, 2022.
Okay. And any other, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Do we need to embarrass Austin anymore?
No.
I'm gonna ask him what his favorite Jimmy Buffet's on.
Oh, yeah, okay. I think so.
Favorite, Austin?
It's gotta be Cheeseburger of Paradise.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. All right, we're, I think we're done embarrassing him. Okay, all in favor of hiring Austin as full-time dispatcher? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Need anything, let us know.
All right.
All right. Are these your parents back here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I think you guys did a good job. Okay.
Does someone have an apartment?
If he saves his money, it does.
Yes. All right, next we have, we switched it to 1C, is discussion of road millage. And we did get language. What I wanted to do is have this discussion with the board. You know, I, it's been weighing on me. We've always done one road project a year in the past nine years. And right now, all of our road funding comes out of our general fund. And, you know, everyone thinks the township's loaded with money. General law townships under general fund is under the Headley Amendment. So what happens, as our taxable values go up, the mills that the township can levy for general fund goes down. So this year, I think we're collecting $283, $282,000 township-wide for our general fund out of property taxes. I know I hate paying taxes, too. But we're getting $282,000 property tax for our general fund. Our road maintenance comes out of our general fund. We are not like cities. Cities get Act 51 money to pay for their roads. We don't get that. The county gets Act 51 money to pay for their roads. We don't get that. It's been all coming out of our general fund. And for example, how, how that Headley Amendment works, I look back, I, I just hadn't, I didn't, I had the numbers handy on my desk. In 2009, from the property taxes we levy, in 2009, we collected $282,000 in 2009 property tax. We're gonna, we, we basically collect the same, how many years, 2009 to 12 years?
13.
13 years ago. There's not too many families or businesses can run past 13 years collecting the same amount of money every year. And I give credit to the administration, our department heads, the, well, this is the general fund, everyone in our general office for making that happen. I mean, we, we've gotten creative over the past 10 years, the cutting costs, making our dollars stretch, and just, just doing things right. But for us to continue to do a road project every year, when I think this year with Fruit, Fruit Road, our road budget's gonna be $233,000. And we make two, we get 280 in, in taxes. So a, a large amount of our general fund goes towards roads. But like I say, we weren't, I told the board, and we all pretty much agree, we weren't gonna do a, a road project. I wanted to have a board discussion about putting a, a millage question to the voters on our November ballot. I like doing November elections better than the primaries, because a lot more people show up to it. It's not like we're gonna try to push something through when only 25% of the voters show up. That's why I want to do it on a November election, when you have 50, 60%, 70%, whatever it is, show up for the question. And we, I propose, if the board so chooses, to, to an ask for .35 mills, which would generate 195,000, estimated $195,000. Now, these funds would go into our restricted fund, can only be spent on roads and ditching. We can't take that money and spend it on anything else, which is the way it should be. And with, with the question I'm, I'm gonna pose, and I want to have a discussion, is do we want to do the ask of our citizens if they would like to do a .35 mil road tax for our roads? We've never had a road tax before in Clay Township. I, myself, I'm, I'm torn on it, big time. And truthfully, I don't care what the voters tell us. It's just how we're gonna, we're gonna run the township going forward.
How much did you say that would generate?
195,000. It's, it's a five-year ask. And what it would cost, if you got a $200,000 house assessed at $100,000, it would be $35 a month, or not a month, a year. It'd be $35 a year. That would be the ask. So you can look at your house, if it's, okay, if you're assessed, you know, if it's $400,000, and your taxable value is 200,000, it would be, what, a $70 ask.
And this would be strictly for Clay Township?
Clay Township roads.
Not St. Clair?
Right. It's here. It's gotta be spent here. We have 44 and a half miles of local roads that the township is responsible for. In other words, we have state road, the state takes care of that. We have county primary roads. The county takes care of that. We have, and this is the reason townships don't get Act 51 money, is the townships cannot, we don't own any roads. But there will be no maintenance, the only maintenance that will be expended on these local road, these 44 and a half miles, has to come from the township. The county is not gonna pay to pave Holland Road, to pave Taft, to pave St. John's, to pave Lakeport, pay Phelps. They're not gonna pay a nickel for it. It all comes out of the township. Now, we are lucky, and we've been, the county does have a match fund, which we'll talk about later, where they'll pay up to $50,000 towards a road project. Not all counties do that. And technically, if you read the fine print, we're only supposed to get that every other year. But we've been lucky. I don't know. They give it to Clay every year, because they know our situation. Most of the other, other townships have road tax. Fort, Point, Fort Grasham does, Point, or Port Huron does. Grant Township, they have two mills they levy. Port Huron Township, they levy a full mill. A lot of them levy a mill or plus. I didn't want to ask for that much, because I don't like, on the national scene and with the economy, you know, there's gonna be some people, I, I hope not, but going through a rough time. And I, that's why I'm torn on it. I, I told myself, no, we're not gonna do this, because, you know, tough times in the county did ask, they asked for additional half mil for EMS, they asked for additional half mil for libraries. Each one of those asks is way over what this ask is, and they both passed pretty, pretty easily. So I just want to have a discussion with the board if we want to put an ask to our citizens for a .35 mil for road and ditching.
So 282,000 is still gonna be allocated out of the general fund, and this will be additional?
No, that's what we collect, 282,000.
Oh, okay. And do you use, how much of that do you usually use for roads now?
Well, I think in the current budget with no road project, I had 115,000 on it. But if we wanted to do Fruit Road, that was gonna cost us another 114,000. So that was putting us up over 200,000. Because we gotta maintain these roads, too. We, we spend about 100,000 a year maintaining the roads. And it's, it's starting to pay off. You know, all the roads, all the, the stone roads, in the past, they used to put stone on them once every three years. We do it every year, on every stone road. And you can really see the difference now. On Harson's Island, Crispin Road, every spring, we had to close the road down, because it gets full of ruts, and, and we just lose the road. We haven't had to do that for two, three years, since we started this process. McKinley, or any of these stone roads that run up to Cotterville, I don't want to slam Cotterville, but they do it once every three years. You can tell a big difference between our road, our gravel road, and You can tell a big difference between our road, our gravel road, and then when you cross the line, you get to, 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 when you leave the township.
Well, we already determined when we did the budget that we weren't going to pull any road money out of our general fund this year, because we just couldn't do it anymore.
Anymore, yeah.
So I, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting it up and, and letting the residents vote on it. I mean, if they want it, then, then we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll continue to do roadwork, and if they don't, then...
Then we won't.
And we'll continue to watch our roads deteriorate a little bit, because right now, we just can't do it.
And, and like I said, we have forty-four and a half miles of, of road that we're responsible for. How long does a road last? Lucky to get forty years out of it? So that's why we've been trying to do at least a mile a year, to keep, keep ahead of it, keep it going. Like I say, this was the first year since I've been in office, we weren't gonna do it. But that's why, and that bothered me too, because roads are very important. So that's why we thought we'd put, put it to, or had, talk about putting a, a ask. So, does anybody wanna comment, or?
And do you remember the condition of the roads around here, and no offense, but to previous administrations, but before you were in office already, and they were, they were pretty crummy around here? Which also, you know, beat up your cars and...
I, I was just gonna ask you kind of feedback you have back from the residents on the road conditions around here. I haven't heard of anything myself.
No, they, I, I think our roads are, are pretty okay. Like I say, in a short list, I do Fruit Road, after that, probably Falker. After that, I got some ideas of, of doing like a, a one-inch slurry over Maple and those roads back there.
Yep, the island's gonna need some love.
Island, what's that?
I said the island is gonna need some love.
Yep, yep.
Some roads over there that are gonna need some work.
I, like I say, how long does a road last? You know, and I, I kinda prioritize it, you know, pretty soon, we're gonna have to do Gina on Lee Street, back there.
I mean, we don't ever have an issue trying to figure out which road to pay, you know, so.
How many of the island's roads are, are not county? Like the main road in front of Horvath, that's bad there, that's scheduled to be done, right? That's county.
Yep.
And that, when is that gonna be done, pretty soon?
Late August, early fall.
Coming up soon? So which roads over there, just the smaller roads, right?
Yeah, all the smaller ones and Cottage Lane.
Okay.
Is Orchid, which we did, and a lot, all the side streets that aren't private. So do you...
Didn't you have a road meeting in February? Do they put out some kind of, like, along with their county road report? Do they put out some kind of report of like the condition of other roads?
They, they, they don't. They do bridges, and which this money could go towards too. But they don't do a, a report on the locals. That, in that meeting, that's where you kinda negotiate and try to get more county money spent, which we, you know, this year, we're doing, the county is doing, they did Anchor Bay Drive. That was a big road they did. I don't know, was that three miles? With a couple inches of asphalt. They're gonna do Bates on the island, part of North Channel, and Golf Course Roads is a total rehab on Golf Course. And Middle Channel, they're gonna recap Middle Channel. And that's slated to happen the end of this, probably be in September, the, the work over there.
Supervisor Bryson, I'm going to number this resolution 2022-20. And I will make a motion to approve the ballot proposition for road and ditch improvements and maintenance to place on the ballot a point five-three, point three-five mills for each dollar for the taxable value of the property is equalized for the purposes of road and ditch maintenance.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion and support. I did get this language from our attorney, and we'll have to get it up if, if the board passes it. We'll have to get it up to the county clerk tomorrow to make the November ballot. Any more discussion? We have motion and support.
Is someone going to read the actual resolution? Or the actual, oh, there isn't one.
Well, I will. Shall the constitutional limitation on, on a total amount of taxes which may be levied on all taxable real and personal property in the township of Clay, St. Clair County, Michigan, be increased by point three-five mills, which one, which each dollar, or in parentheses, is thirty-five cents for each one thousand dollars of the taxable value of such property, and finally, equalize pursuant to 51 PA, 1951, as amended for the period of five years commencing 2022 through 2026, for the exclusive, or exclusive for the purpose of providing road and ditch maintenance and improvements within the township? It's a question mark, yes or no? The estimated revenue to be collected on the first year that the millage is authorized and levied is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The proposed millage represents a new additional millage. I'll make that clear, this is not a renewal, it's a new ask. Is that good, Mark?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Because the restricted funds, yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Okay, we have six to one. Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda, we have Fruit Road asking for, pass a resolution to do that job, and asking for road assistance with the county. Been doing one of these a year. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-15, excuse me, Resolution Relative to Request for Local System Road Funding Assistance for Fruit Road Dependent on Approval of a Road Millage.
Okay, a motion and support, and this is why I wanted to switch the area. We'll, and I'm in favor of this, we'll do Fruit Road pending the approval of the road millage, and the first Tuesday in November.
So how much, how much will this generate if the request goes through?
The, well, I, I have the numbers written for me, I don't know where I put it. Our cost would be, what, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars? And the match would be another fifty thousand dollars, that's what this is for, to get the match.
And it would start in the spring?
Yeah, and this is what's hard, because our, our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30. Sometimes these jobs come in before July, and sometimes after July, depends on the contractor. So it could hit this year, I don't know, probably hit next year's budget. But regardless, we'll have it in our budget for this year.
Okay, we have motion and support?
Yes.
We, we do have motion and support?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Any more discussion on the local road funding? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2022-16, Resolution to Set Garbage and Refuge Fees, and like I say, it's not going to stay the same.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-16. It's curbside garbage and refuge and recycling collection. It's 2022 Special Assessment Levy.
Support.
All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
And that assessment is a hundred and seventy-two dollars per year per dwelling unit excluding the out-island parcel. Correct?
And Russell Island.
And Russell Island.
They are what, one-twenty?
One-thirty-seven.
One-thirty-seven, it's been a while.
Mr. Supervisor, can you repeat again how that differs from last year?
It doesn't.
Thank you.
It's the same. All right, we have support, and our, our motion of support on Resolution 2022-16.
Mark, did you support that?
No, it was me.
Oh, sorry.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2022-17. Resolution to Set General Operating Mills.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-17, the Resolution for Clay Township General Operating Mills, which now due to Headley would be point five-oh-nine-one mills, generating two hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for the general fund.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, how does that differ from last year's?
It went down, the, the millage rate, I'm not sure.
It's point five-one-something, something.
It was point five-one-nine-two this year, it's point five-oh-nine-one.
Mills are going down.
Yeah.
Mills are going down.
Thank you.
And for comparison, all the other township, all the other general law townships in the township, they hover around point eight, point eight and a half mills, and we're at point five, a little, a, a hair above it, half a mil. Charter townships don't have this, they, they can set whatever they want, up to five mills. But, so yeah, just want everyone to be clear on that. It's, we don't come up with this millage, it's given to us.
This is where you were talking about the two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I say, in the past twenty years, we've been operating on the same amount of property tax that we collect in real dollars. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. Okay, next we have Resolution 2022-18, Set the Police Mills, which is staying the same, at four-point-eight-five mills.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve and support Resolution Number 2022-18. It's a resolution for special assessment, the Clay Township Police Department. Same as last year, figures at four-point-eight-five mills.
Support.
Motion and support. Any more discussion? Or any discussion?
Do we need to read the revenue that it will generate?
Hearing none, roll call.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. All right, next is Resolution 2022-19, to set the fire millage.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-19, the Resolution for Special Assessment for Clay Township Fire, to remain the same at two-point-one-two-five mills.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, that's it on our new business. We have board member comments. Cindy Valentine, good job on the election.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any board comments?
I got a couple. I'd like to say welcome to Austin. If you learned anything tonight, it's so you don't wanna be at another board meeting.
Yeah, face in the front row.
They get a little lengthy and long-winded sometimes. This actually wasn't horrible. Happy to have you aboard, and I do wanna thank all of our office staff and the DPW for their patience and assistance. With the past election, we got one more to go, November 8.
Are you looking for workers?
We're always taking applications for workers, yeah, always. Never know what, what's gonna happen.
Mark?
Congratulations and welcome, Austin.
Thank you.
You're gonna have a good run here, I can, I can tell. You're a good guy. Congratulations to the fire chief for all the work well done over the summer, especially in the, the events taking place out in the water, which is a hazard in itself, and as well as the, the fire department, the police department as well. And congratulations to the board, we made some headway today on operating the government. So kudos to all, thank you.
You wanna talk about the turkey shoot? Does that...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'll let you talk about the turkey shoot.
And the Algonquin Lions is having a two, uh, turkey shoot, which is a big, three-day festival over, over at the Harson's Island Lions Club. Everybody knows that's at, it's a great event, I'm there every year, one to three days, so I'm pretty tired when I come back. But keep that in mind.
Yep. Congratulations, Austin, we're happy to have you. And just to let you know, the next meeting will be Tuesday following Labor Day. So, you know, normally it's on the first Monday, but because of Labor Day, our meeting will be on Tuesday, and everybody be safe over Labor Day weekend.
Yep.
Austin, you got a good boss sitting next to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, you got anything? PSAs?
I do have a PSA today.
All right.
Yeah, as a matter of fact. First, thanks, thanks for bringing us a quality candidate. Austin, I appreciate the suit and the dress for success. That's, that's a class act, so you're off to a good start in my eyes. PSA today. So, as many of you know, I'm, I'm in the insurance restoration estimating business, and I've come across a host of large and devastating, both commercial and residential fires. And I see people reeling with the loss of not only their homes and businesses, but also their personal possessions. And it's a dramatic, traumatizing, and it's frankly, a period in people's lives that they just soon forget about, because it's very, very difficult. My PSA today talks about running your cell phone in a video mode and video your home. The video should take you less than, you know, five or 10 minutes. Just go room by room, do a panoramic shot of your closets, your nooks, your, your linen cabinets, your, your pantries, inside your cabinets. So you have some record and recollection of exactly what's in your home. Because if you have to sit down and try and recall those in a list of thousands and thousands of items, it's devastating. It's emotional, it's dramatic, and it's something that you don't really wanna have to go through without having some backup data to support your claim. So my PSA today is, before the summer ends, our resident get out there and they video their home, outside, inside, and then take that video and throw it up on, to a hard drive somewhere, put it in a safety deposit box, put it on the cloud, just something for personal reference, and then forget about it, and pray that you'll never need it again. and pray that you'll never need it again. Thank you.
So I was out of town last week and missed music in the park, so I was bummed, but I was glad to see the pictures of everything that was collected. So I know we had some large bags of dog food and things that were donated, so that, I'm super happy about that. I'm a huge animal lover, and so I know that Animal Control just posted, I don't know if it was over the weekend or today, that they are in dire need of animal fosters. They are at capacity, they can't take any more animals in if they don't have fosters. So if you have the means to foster a dog or a cat or a bunny, I think they have bunnies, too, consider doing that. Doesn't have to be long-term unless you fall in love and you can't live without that pet, but you know, if you can do something, try to do something.
Are you fostering any right now? I know you have in the past.
I would love to, but no, I'm not right now.
Yeah. Okay.
My kittens from last year are turning a year old in a week.
Wow.
Yeah, I had six fosters last year. Oh, they're all at homes.
They're gone.
They were adopted.
You're not ready to go to college yet?
Yeah.
Time to go to college.
Yeah.
Join the Army. All right, very good, thank you. Austin, congratulations. You'll see me popping over there once in a while, and we'll be watching you. Awesome. I want to mention, we did have a garage fire on the island, and kudos to the fire department. They put it out, did, one corner of the house got zapped, too, and their shed. But it was challenging, this guy, he's a nice guy, that, he just moved here two months ago. I mean, the guy's just figuring out what day the garbage is and everything, and he really loves our community and being here. He's a retired Marine. And what made it really challenging to put this fire out, he was loaded with ammunition. Is he? Oh. Anyhow, the fire, no, I'm glad, but the fire department did a good job, you know, as best they could, putting it out with, you know, ammo firing and everything else. I did leave a note for them to contact me if we could help them, and hopefully that would do that. But I want to give kudos to the fire, our fire department. And just want to again tell everyone, be safe, slow down a little bit, you know, we've seen it numerous times, people are in a hurry and they get in an accident, and you're only saving 10, 15 seconds, but you're putting yourself at risk at a life-altering accident. Just be smart. So other than that, be safe, and
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Okay. All in favor, ayes, and thank you for coming, everybody.